For all who cared to join me, let Stan say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have some commissioners who will not be here tonight. Stephanie Stoodley, Brian Carney, and Jen.
I'm going to read our board norms. Debate, commentary, and discussion are healthy and open. Listening and speaking are equally important, and both should be done with respect and consideration. Focus is on students and our schools, not politics. Assume best intentions in all discussions.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have an addendum that needs to be added to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then I need a motion to actually approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving right into communication and public input. Do we have anyone from the community who'd like to speak?
If there's anybody on the list.
Okay, not having anyone, we'll move right into school program updates and our student rep reports.
We also have the Tapestry Epic reports included. For the Rutland Intermediate School, thank you to all our families for attending parent teacher conferences and taking the time to connect with our teachers about your child's progress. Your ongoing support makes a tremendous difference. We also appreciate everyone who helped make our Scholastic Book Fair and Candy Bar fundraisers such great successes. Your participation helps us continue to provide wonderful learning experiences and opportunities. Each grade level participates in a daily skills block designed to build strong foundational reading and writing skills. During this time, students engage in explicit instruction focused on phonics, phonemic awareness, decoding, and spelling patterns. Teachers use small group instruction to target individual student needs and provide opportunities for guided practice. This consistent focused time helps students grow as confident and independent readers and writers. This is a shift in practice, and the staff has fully committed to this work. We're excited to see the progress in our students. Weekly in Tapestry at RIS, students explore cultural and current events around the world, building literacy and math skills through games and activity stations, while also engaging in physical activity combined with teamwork. Our family engagement event is Family Board Game Night on October 30th from 4:00 to 5:30 PM. Come join us. Northeast Primary, September was full of great energy. We kicked off the year with a well-attended open house where families connected with teachers and explored classrooms. Our second graders loved their little city field trip downtown, learning about how communities work. And we held our first PAWS character trait assembly with Superintendent Reed, celebrating how we show our school values every day and learn about a new portrait of a graduate trait each month. Students are also enjoying our new movement lab, a fun space that helps them stay active and focused. Our Lifetime Sports Program is off to a great start, with students learning biking and golf in September, and rock climbing and yoga next. We're excited to see the positive impacts and benefits of physical movement for our students. We've partnered with the middle school in an exciting AI cohort, where teachers are exploring how to use Gemini to enhance learning. Each month, the cohort will dive into new topics around AI integration in education. Looking ahead to later this month, we are excited for our Fall Festival on Friday, October 17th, and School Picture Days on October 27th and 28th. We hope families will join us for our annual Halloween Parade at 2:30 PM on October 31st. Students will also participate in fast food testing in early November, and we're thrilled to join Northwest Elementary at the Rutland Rec Center for a joint STEAM Day event on November 14th. Tapestry at Northeast Primary is taking another step toward intentional programming, incorporating math literacy, STEAM SEL skills, student goal setting, and physical activity weekly. This week, students built popsicle stick and tape bridges and tested their strength by adding candy corns. The strongest held 200. September was a great month at Northwest Primary, as students and teachers settled into routines and built strong classroom communities. Now that we are well into October, instructional focus and learning are in full swing. We held our first Professional Development Day with our consultants from Partnerships for Literacy and Learning, PLL. Each grade level had the opportunity to meet with a PLL team for an hour to reflect on and refine the literacy goal they set at the beginning of the school year. In the afternoon, our data team analyzed school-wide data to identify trends and discuss implications for instructions throughout the year. Grade level leads then brought this information back to their teams to guide instructional planning and next steps. Our students have also enjoyed several enriching experiences beyond the classroom. Kindergarten students visited the fire station, where they learned how firefighters keep our community safe and explored the station's equipment and vehicles. First graders are preparing for their upcoming trip to Billings Farm, which connects their social studies standard of comparing life in the past to life today. And second graders will soon be spending time exploring downtown, learning more about their community and its important places. We'd like to thank all of our families who were able to make it to open house at the end of September, and parent conferences last week. We had wonderful attendance at both events. And finally, Tapestry at Northwest Primary is using pumpkins and detectives as foundations for science reading, cooking, inquiry, and math this month. Most weeks include student-led activities, which each student plans and delivers to share a hobby or passion with their peers.
From the Rutland Middle School, we are hosting Sweethearts and Heroes as they train educators from around the state on running effective circles and restorative circles. Sweethearts and Heroes is a great organization that works with students and schools to promote kindness and empathy. We are excited to continue building this partnership. Students in our Kitchen 101 Far Out class will be providing homemade snacks. Our seventh graders just finished their cell unit. The classrooms were chirping with discussions of DNA, cell membranes, and the probability of genetic traits, brought to life through experiments with live eggs in the incubator. At the end of the unit, the culmination arrived with the peeping of fresh chicks, a demonstration of biological process in action, growing from a single cell to living, breathing organism right before our eyes, while our students engaged from the start to finish. And from Rutland High School, RHS was pleased to hold our parent teacher conferences. We saw a 2.5 increase in appointments this year over last year, and last year was a 7% increase over the year before. Pleased to see an upward trend in participation. We welcomed our German students to the Rutland School Community this week. This is the second half of the exchange after RHS students visited their peers in the spring. Special thanks to Megan Marsh, Marissa Aston, and Tegan Kirkelkin for coordinating and making this exchange possible. And from the Rutland Middle School and High School Epic, both programs are building student-informed programs incorporating hands-on science, cooking, problem-solving art, and more to extend academic learning and acquire life skills, writing, designing, and public speaking, to name a few. RMS Epic is also hosting the school dance on October 24th, planning and designing the decoration, snacks, and playlists to keep everyone on their feet.
Thank you, Amelia and Danielle. Does anyone have any questions for our student reps? Okay, thank you. Moving into the UVM Outstanding Teacher of the Year recognition, our principals.
Principals and teachers, come on forward. So each year, the University of Vermont recognizes outstanding educators in Vermont. And so this year, we have selections from Northwest, the Rutland Intermediate School, and Stafford Technical Center. And our principals will share a little bit about each teacher, so that you get to know them a bit. They'll be celebrated later in the month with an event at UVM.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So I would like to introduce Megan Enthal. She is a dedicated sixth-grade teacher who always puts students first and holds high expectations for their success. Her passion for learning inspires both students and colleagues, while her creativity and leadership shine through initiatives such as Rutland Rising, which supports sixth graders transitioning to Rutland Middle School. As a team leader and a student council advisor, Megan empowers others with optimism and innovation, making her a truly deserving UVM Teacher of the Year. I am honored to work along the side of her this year. We're new colleagues, and it has been absolutely fantastic to watch her in action with our students. So we're super honored to announce her at Rutland Intermediate School. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the nomination. It means a lot.
She's great. She taught my kid last year.
I did mine too, a few years ago.
That's great. Long time ago.
Long time ago.
Sure. So it is my honor to share that Mrs. Gail Campopiano is being recognized as the Northwest Primary Schools UVM Outstanding Teacher of the Year. Unfortunately, she could not join us tonight. But Mrs. Campopiano is a second-grade teacher at Northwest, and she is being celebrated for her innovation and unwavering dedication to student success. In her classroom, she designs creative and engaging lessons that meet the diverse needs of all learners, ensuring that every student feels seen, supported, and challenged. Mrs. Campopiano's positive attitude creates a welcoming and supportive classroom environment where students not only learn, but truly thrive. Her impact extends well beyond her own classroom. She serves as her grade-level teacher leader, the Northwest STEAM teacher lead, and the second-grade representative on our school data team. In all of these roles, she continually supports and uplifts her colleagues' modeling, collaboration, and professionalism in everything that she does. Gail is a true model of excellence in teaching and an incredibly valued member of the Northwest community. And we're very proud to recognize her many contributions and celebrate her well-deserved honor as our UVM Outstanding Teacher of the Year. Thanks, Cory.
And I'm pleased to present Chris Thule, who has been at Stafford for eight years now. During his time, he has proven his dedication and commitment to his students, his colleagues, and his trade repeatedly. Plumbing is a trade that requires precision, safety, problem-solving, and professionalism, and a great instructor models all of these qualities. He goes above and beyond to prepare them to work in industry, whether it's in the field, on a job site, or at a supply house. He's an excellent communicator and an advocate for each of his students. In June, he attended the Skills USA National Skilled Leadership Conference in Atlanta with his plumbing student, who was the Vermont Gold Medalist. He continually goes above and beyond. He supports first-year instructors by being their mentor, and is always on the lookout for new certifications that will help his students meet the workforce need. In his spare time, he also instructs for the Plumbing Apprentice Program for the Vermont Department of Labor. And most likely, if you've had a plumber in your house in the last eight years, he was part of their career path. So congratulations.
Thank you.
I need a punter bag.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Awesome. Thank you. I wish my report were going to be as enthusiastic and exciting, but I'm going to just talk a little bit about a few updates from the state level. So the first one is about the School District Redistricting Task Force. Their charge from the legislators, just to remind everyone, is to redraw Vermont's school district boundaries to recommend larger consolidated districts, serving between 4,000 and 8,000 students. So they just had their fourth meeting on September 29th, and they chose which scenarios to carry forward into more detailed work. One of them is drawing district lines around tech center regions. Another is drawing lines around county boundaries. A third is to establish regional high schools. And the fourth is to explore a shared service model whereby districts keep their own boards, but work together to share costly programs and staff. That model would not replace new district maps, but it could be used alongside them. The model that seems to have gotten a lot of traction of late is the one that forms districts around regional tech centers. So for our region, that would mean that a draft map would show Rutland and nearby districts grouped into a region that's anchored by Stafford Technical Center. The regional high school model was described kind of as a long-term vision. The model would require statewide plan for school construction, because it imagines large, modern high schools serving broader regions, with the elementary and middle schools remaining under the same board. Given that many high schools are not designed to serve as regional hubs, the construction plan would be critical in making that model work. The task force is going to continue to refine those models, exploring other uses, sorry, exploring others using information such as travel time for students, wait lists, and service gaps. We are excited that Rutland is going to host a Redistricting Task Force meeting on October 22nd from 6:00 to 8:00. That will be in the theater at the Rutland High School. It's really a great opportunity for our region, for them, the task force, to hear about our perspectives and opinions, as well as to hear what their thoughts are as well. So I encourage everyone to put that on their calendar and reserve October 22nd from 6:00 to 8:00.
And that's RHS Theater?
Yep, RHS Theater. There's also a band concert that evening, so after you give your thoughts and opinions, you can go and enjoy some music. It'll be great. Another update is from the Commission on the Future of Public Education. This was a group that was established by our legislation in 2024, but its charge was altered, given all the activity that happened in 2025. So their charge is to make recommendations for what roles, functions, or decisions should be local control, and then what should be of state control, as well as to provide necessary updates to roles and responsibilities of school districts and boards, and to make recommendations for a process that will serve our communities by having a school voice. So the group met here at Longfellow last week for half of the day. The conversation was really rich and complex. It was interesting to listen to. If anyone would like to hear more about their current recommendations, please feel free to give me a call or reach out. I'm happy to share them or talk about them. The group is hosting meetings around the state, and they're welcoming observers to come to those as well. So this was kind of their central spot in the state, so it was great to have them. In connection to both the task force and the commission, we've been working closely with Maggie Lentz at Atlas Consulting. She helps to keep us apprised of the activities connected to redistricting and the future of public education, including both the task force and, again, the commission meetings. And soon enough, she'll be keeping us updated on the work of the legislators in connection to Act 73. The last one I'm going to give you is an update on the Senate Ed Committee. Senator Seth Bongart's reached out to me a couple of weeks ago to ask if they could visit our school district, because they've heard that we do an excellent job with our continuum of services. And they are going around to different schools in the state that are identified as excelling in a specific area. And so we were identified, again, as excelling that area. So they're going to spend the day with us on October 31st. Great day, don't you think? And will include tours. They would like to see Stafford Technical Center, so that's probably going to be our base for the day, is up at the high school in Stafford. We'll have a student panel. We'll find a way also to loop in all of our different buildings and what we offer. They'll have lunch with students, have an opportunity to learn from our staff, and then they'll end their day with public comment. So that's all I have. Any questions about those? No? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted, come in.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak with you about the preparation of our fiscal '27 budget. I'm going to share with you some observations tonight regarding the progress, and the status, and the next steps of that budget. We are not going to be sharing specific fiscal '27 budget estimates with you yet, because those are underway. Those estimates will come at next month's meetings in November. So let me go ahead and click on these charts for everybody else who's here. So on page two, the basic, and probably the most important message here, is at the top of the page, that indicates that all of the factors that we are working on in the budget for '27 are being evaluated relative to our strategic plan goals. This has always been the case, but more so with greater focus this year, as the administrative leaders have developed and progressed that plan. So by the end of this month, we will complete an initial assessment of our district-wide salary and benefits costs. And as you might recall, those costs constitute approximately 80% of our total budget. So that's a very important component. And in doing so, we're working with Pam, and Bianca, and Carrie, and the principals, and other administrative leaders to ascertain what is the mix of the staffing that is needed in terms of skill sets and backgrounds in order to make progress on our strategic plan toward its goals, as well as the levels. And naturally, the key matters and funding needs that we're going to be evaluating and finishing up our initial assessment for this month include anticipated levels of federal grant revenues, such as our title grants. That's a very uncertain outlook at this point, but Bianca's working closely with the AOE to make sure that we incorporate the best available guidance. As you probably recall from previous meetings, the district is undertaking a very substantial and a non-discretionary phone replacement project over the next year or two. So we're working closely with IT and other stakeholders to ascertain what funds we'll need to budget for that project. It's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And naturally, as we always do, we're working with our budget stakeholders to understand what funding will be needed for typical computing updates, to maintain building operations integrity. And we're going to add some additional focus this year on what employee professional development needs we might need to fund. Once again, in the context of making sure that we provide the kind of training and development that will be necessary to maximize the probability that we achieve those strategic plan goals. There are other possible enhancements and additions that we're evaluating and will likely include in our proposed budget for '27, including educational programs, like the possible establishment of pre-K program. So a number of members of the leadership team are working on that, and we'll have some recommendations and budget estimates forthcoming for you on that. And then, of course, there's the possible cafeteria renovations that we've been considering for a number of years at RIMS and RMS, and we're making great progress on that. Any questions about the overview? Okay, on page three, I'm just showing you a few basic metrics in terms of fiscal '26, and let me go ahead and advance here. Fiscal '26 and fiscal '27 increases in salaries, what we call percentage of new money. And what you're looking at here is, in the blue, the percentage increases for this current year, fiscal '26. And in the green, the increases that are forthcoming for '27, based upon our existing contracts. And what I've done here is to cluster various employee-represented groups. So for example, in the first cluster at the far left, you see the respective year percentages for our REA professionals, teachers, and nurses. The next cluster, you see the REA, our education support professionals. Then our AFME-represented building facilities and grounds employees, our regional administrators, who are the principals and assistant principals, and then our non-aligned team, which is roughly about 50 people who are not represented by a union contract. And of course, a key point that's different this year versus last year's budget is we now have labor contracts in place for all of these groups, and three of the largest represented groups have contracts now in place through June of 2027. The REA contract actually runs through '28. So we know what the salaries are going to be for various positions, and now it's going to be a matter of, again, working with the administrative leaders to determine how many people we're going to have and in which of those categories. But our ability to forecast salaries and benefits will be much improved versus the estimates we had to make last year. You might notice that at the far right, there's a little box that says "to be determined." And that's because, as some of you might recall, we, every year, we benchmark and we approve percentage increases for our non-aligned employees. And we're going to do a similar process this year, although we're likely to bring those recommendations forward to the board earlier than usual. Not to get too far into too many numbers, but I did put a box over to the right. Not going to go through all those numbers, but what it's intended to show you is something that we always talked about in Staff Relations Committee, and that is, it's not just the percentage increase that you look at, you know, this district gave that percentage, that district gave this percentage. What we try and target for is the dollar level of salaries, because, as you know, the district's policy is to offer compensation that is sufficient to retain, attract, and motivate the best possible candidates that we can get. And I thought you might be interested to know that subsequent to the agreement that our district reached with the REA in late May, two additional school systems, Rutland Northeast Supervisory Union and Slate Valley, reached agreement with their respective unions. And what caught my attention, because it might provide some indications for the future, is that if you look at, like, at Rutland Northeast Supervisory Union, all of these numbers are the highest salaries that you could make in the respective school systems in the given year, which means for people who have the most education and the most years of service. So as you can see, based on the agreement that Rutland Northeast just reached, over there, you can make over $105,000 in fiscal '27. The comparable number for Slate Valley is $93,600. Comparable numbers for us, based on both teachers and nurses, are shown below. But of course, as we always talk about, Rutland City Public Schools has a very unique benefit that no other school district in this area offers, which is a second pension provided through the city of Rutland, and for which the district contributes 10% annually of each employee who elects to participate that. So if you want to look at comparable compensation, salary plus that unique benefit, it's reasonable to say, well, let's look at the Rutland City Public Schools inclusive of that 10%. And one reason that that's a representative approach is because more than 90% of our teachers, for example, elect to participate in this very valuable benefit program, and many of our other employees. So if you look at our '27 salaries plus the 10% compensation for teachers and nurses, you can see that puts us for this year, I mean, for the coming budget year, at $101,600 for teachers, and a little higher, $104,000 for nurses. So that's just to kind of indicate where we are. And then if you just look forward to '28, the year beyond that, and you look at the numbers, you can see that both Rutland Northeast and Slate Valley increased their '28 numbers by about 4% over '27. So just, you know, we always like to say, we're not budgeting just for this year, we're budgeting for future years, so we like to look ahead and kind of have an idea of what's coming. Any questions about salaries? Okay. So I thought it would also be important to provide you with a couple of reference points on employee benefits. The numbers that are on this chart are for our current year fiscal '26 budget, because, of course, we're still working on the '27 employee benefits budget. But I thought what might be striking for a number of you is to recognize that for this year, the school district has budgeted to pay almost $18 million in employee benefits. And that equates to approximately $36,000 of employee benefits per FTE. Those of us who work for this school district are extremely fortunate that we have such a well-funded and such a generous employee benefits program. And of course, many of these benefits are the same. They are the same in other school districts, except for the city pension, but this is obviously a significant area of compensation for public school employees. And if you look at the box on the left, you can see there's, I don't expect you to be able to read all that, but what it's illustrating to you is there's about a dozen different categories of employee benefits that, employees that we all receive. And it kind of shows you what it is per dollar of salary, because these benefits, on average, add about 50 cents of compensation per dollar of salary. So for every dollar that we pay somebody, their total compensation's really about $1.50. I grouped that into a pie chart, just to group some of the categories, but what I wanted to attract your attention to is over on the far right, which gives you some selected details of what that 57% of health and dental costs are, which totals $10 million for this budget year, eight and a half of which relates just to the medical plan premiums that we pay on behalf of our full-time employees. That 8.4 million is pretty important, because you can do the math with me and figure that if those costs increase by, pick a number, 10% again, and they've been going up at double-digit year, eight and a half of which relates just to the medical plan premiums that we pay on behalf of our full-time employees. That 8.4 million is pretty important, because you can do the math with me and figure that if those costs increase by, pick a number, 10% again, and they've been going up at double-digit rates, then right there, that would add $840,000 to our '27 budget alone. Any questions about employee benefits? Okay. The next chart shows you a little bit more detail on what's been happening with medical plan costs. I'm sure many of you remember, but to me, the striking pattern is that in four out of five years, the percentage increases have been double-digit. And as you can see, for this current year fiscal '26, the increase was 11.9%. It's been averaging over the last three years about 13.5%. We are going to get guidance, fortunately, from the Vermont Education Healthcare Initiative, or VIHI. We're going to get guidance later this month on what they anticipate the fiscal '27 increases will be. We'll be able to share that with you when we come back in November. And as large of a factor as that is, it will be good to be able to nail that down in our estimates for you. Any questions? I'm sorry, what?
Can you advance?
Oh, sorry about that. Thank you very much. So, let's go forward to the next one. Thank you, Bianca. Okay. So, any questions about the medical plan? All right. So, now moving forward one more. That's inflation for the medical plan. And I just wanted to share a couple of brief observations with you about inflation in general, because the budget that we're going to bring forward to you is going to assume approximately 3% in general inflation for most other categories. You know, with the exception of specifics like healthcare, IT, a few categories like that. Why would we assume that? Well, it's pretty interesting, because there are many, many different measures of inflation. They're calculated in different ways, they're reported for different purposes. Many of you have probably heard of the Consumer Price Index. Some of you might have heard of the Personal Consumption Expenditures Price Index. That second one happens to be the favorite target for the Federal Reserve Board when it's setting monetary policy for the country. Then there's a Producer Price Index, which is sort of a leading indicator, not of what consumers spend, but what producers are spending to produce the goods. To me, what's very interesting about all these metrics is that they're all in the 2.5% to 3% range, which, you know, may or may not be what we're actually experiencing in our lives, but that, those are the numbers that the government is producing. And as you can see in the chart at the right, for the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, it's the annual measurements released on a monthly basis have all been below 3%, you know, since the beginning of this year. So the anticipation and angst that a lot of people have felt about, oh my goodness, what's going to happen to inflation because of the tariffs that have been imposed? And the answer is, we really don't know. And that could be coming, but as of right now, the data have not shown us any substantial tariff-induced cost spikes. So the other thing to remember about tariffs is, if those do start to impact our costs, tariffs typically have a one-time price change. It has less of an impact of continuing ongoing inflation. So for now, the numbers you're going to see next month assume 3%, you know, as a general placeholder for many of our costs, like supplies and things like that. Okay? All right. So, almost done. Thank you for your patience. This chart is intended to orient some of our newer board members. Those who were here last year might remember it. This recaps a couple of basic pupil metrics and spending numbers for the '26 budget in blue and the previous year before that. What I want to highlight for you is the last line, the per-pupil education spending, which for '26 was budgeted at $12,197. That was a great number, because it was actually down almost 2% from the year before. And what's really important for members of the board to know is that now, although the school district does not set its budget targeting for a certain tax rate, naturally, as we develop the budget, we're going to try and be cognizant and considerate of what the budgetary implications might be for that tax rate. And we will be providing you with some estimates as we get into, you know, December and January. But what's interesting is the fact that the per-pupil education spending costs went down for '26 helped to mitigate or reduce the overall tax rate effect. And there are many factors that drive that, but as a result of this factor and others, our tax rate for this year dropped to $1.61 from $1.67 the year before. So, you know, that was good news. We funded the schools in the way we wanted to. We didn't increase the tax burden, you know, on our local residents. But what's really important for a lot of people, especially if you're new to the budgeting process, to know is how you get to that number, because you're going to hear us talk a lot about our total expenditures. And the total expenditures were budgeted for this year at 67.2 million, the number you see on the top line. But then those get offset by a variety of revenues, most substantially being federal grants that we get to fund many of these expenditures. And many people, you know, like Bianca and others, work very hard throughout the year trying to ensure that we optimize and maximize the use of those grants. And for the '26 budget, you can see that we had almost $24 million of such revenue coming in to help offset expenditures, which meant that, for this year, the state of Vermont had to fund a little over $43 million. And it's that $43 million that will determine the tax rate, because all Vermont cares about is, well, how much do I have to spend to fund your school operations, and therefore, how much do I need to raise in taxes? So, you know, as you may have observed, if you were here on the board during ESAR, you know, one year, that top line was $74 million. But the next line, the revenues, also went up significantly because of the ESAR grants we were getting, which meant there was zero impact on the state-funded amount. So, you know, we work the expenses hard with you, we work the revenues and federal grants just as hard with you, because both factors are going to determine the amount that the state has to fund, and we'll be telling you more about that. The middle line there, which is the net, the long-term weighted average daily membership, is one of many different pupil metrics that get calculated by the AOE based on input we provide. That number is important, because it's obviously going to determine, once we have the state funding amount, what the cost per defined pupil is. And, you know, one of the hardest things in any organization and any system is to count the number of people, or in this case, the number of students, because there are lots of different metrics. We work really hard with our registrar and with others to make sure that we've got the latest and greatest numbers, but if you have questions, please ask, because this can be a fairly confusing area. Yes?
I have a question.
Yes.
It's not really a clarifying question.
Sure, please.
Headlines about the federal AOE basically being dissolved.
Mm-hmm.
And grant funds not being administered.
Mm-hmm.
Have you, has there been any repercussions from any of that for this year?
Would you like to comment on that, Bianca?
Right now, as far as title funding goes, we have been told that what has been allocated to us is still available for spending, and we are good for what we have allocated and approved in our consolidated federal program grants. I believe the same is true for our 21st Century Grant, which is also funded through a title. I think there's a lot up in the air regarding some other grants that we receive moving forward. You'll probably recall that last year, we were given a tentative, what they believed was going to be our allocation, but nothing gets finalized until July 1st, and then things were pretty rocky this summer. So I don't know. I don't know if we'll always play by the same kinds of rules that we have been playing by, or if something could change that. I will tell you that what we are hearing from the agency is that we're all moving forward, hoping that things will sort of stay as they are, and we'll see how it goes. So at this point, we're, that's what we're planning for.
With regard to special education, we've also heard that the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act funds are still intact. However, there was a comment made about the funds going to agencies that will support students really well, according to Dr. or Mr. Trump. Those were, they'll do it really well. So I'm not sure what that means. The funding at this point is here, but I don't know what that means.
It's okay for now.
It's all, it's right. For now, we're good.
Yes. And so, but I can summarize the implications from a budgetary standpoint, and in terms of what we're going to recommend to you next month, which will be per the guidance that Bianca offered, we're going to assume a steady state at this point. There are some indications that some of the title funding might be reduced, and with Bianca's guidance, we are likely to possibly reflect those reductions in revenues that we bring forward to you, if we decide that that is the most prudent and conservative budgeting approach to take. And then we will calibrate accordingly. The only other thing that I would offer the school board, in terms of some reassurance from a macro standpoint, is that even without the current uncertainties, there are always timing ebbs and flows. Our cash outlays are relatively continuous, because we pay people salaries every two weeks, we pay vendors every day. Our inflows tend to be lumpy. They come several times a year. And so we maintain a balance of operating working capital, much as any business would, to help us navigate those ebbs and flows. Another example is, many grants require us to spend the money upfront and then file quarterly for reimbursement after the fact. So again, we maintain what we consider to be prudent working capital balances to manage that. We are in good shape, and so if there is some additional uncertainty that's forthcoming because of issues out of Washington, based on what we know today, we should still be okay. But we'll monitor the situation carefully.
Thank you.
So how much is at risk?
Pardon me?
For grant monies? What are we talking about? Like, what is the pot of money that's at risk?
Well, I can put it to you this way, and then, of course, I would defer to Bianca, but in terms of title funds, we receive many millions of dollars annually. Now, the question becomes, you know, how crazy do you think that, you know, people might or might not get? I would personally like to be optimistic and think even with all of the political issues and controversies, that hopefully the federal government would not throw public education through the windshield and, you know, cause dramatic changes. But, you know, who's to really not?
Are these grants, then, question reimbursable type or not?
If I understand your question correctly.
Some of them are, I think.
Some of them are, as Ted described, we pay upfront, but it's all based on approved investments by the agency, so the guarantee of being reimbursed quarterly, as long as we are investing appropriately with those approved investments, we should be reimbursed. I will say, there are some competitive grants that we have received that we are likely to not receive in the future. For example, we had a four-year Stronger Connections Grant. That grant only goes, technically, it goes through September, and so there is a small portion of next fiscal year that could be in that grant. But the indicators we are getting from the Agency of Education is that four-year Stronger Connections Grant will not likely exist moving forward into the future. That was funded with part of Title IV. However, we've known that, and so the way we are utilizing that money is not putting positions and other types of things at risk. Certainly, we've appreciated that funding. It's allowed us to do some other kinds of things, but we know that those resources are not likely to be there. We also receive a couple smaller competitive grants, like our anti-tobacco grant. Those, from year to year, we don't know about, and they, the AOE waits to hear from the federal agency if we're going to have funds available. And so those, every year, we're unsure about, but they are not the bulk of our money. The bulk of our funding in our title grants really is Title I. Most of the indicators that we've heard at this point is that Title I will likely stay the most secure, but some of the other title funding we receive, like Title II, which is, I'll generalize here, for professional development, Title III, which supports our multilingual learners, and Title IV, which supports things like safe and healthy schools, are more likely to be discussed by the federal government. Both, well, Title II, Title III, and Title IV were all kind of put on pause this summer, and we had anticipated receiving that funding, and so we had to kind of make some decisions until they eventually release those funds. But hopefully, Title I, which is the majority of the funding we received, will hopefully stay intact.
And a very important point that underlies what Bianca just shared with you is that even though this chart shows you one line for revenues and federal grants, Bianca and the business office and others, we work very closely to monitor a few dozen individual grant areas, some bigger than others, but we literally work closely with Bianca to go grant by grant and ask ourselves, okay, what's the outlook for this? Do we increase, do we keep it the same, or do we decrease it based on the probabilities and the guidance? So it gets worked in considerable detail to help us get to a reasonably accurate estimate.
At this point, the agency is hoping for level funding of those grants. That doesn't necessarily mean level funding for us. For example, when the agency makes their allocations of Title I, for example, they look at all qualifying Title I schools in the state, and that can vary. For us, it's, we're pretty secure that we're going to qualify for Title I based on some of our demographics, but for some schools, they might not qualify one year and qualify the next year. And so the pool of money sometimes shifts in terms of our allocation. We might get a little less, we might get a little more, based on how all of the state numbers come together.
Any other questions about that? Okay, great. I think we're just about done, then. So in terms of next steps, I put on there the date of November 4th, which is the next Finance Committee meeting before your next board meeting, and I highlight that just to remind everybody that even for those of you who are not officially on the Finance Committee, you are welcome to come to any Finance Committee meeting that you wish. And if you want to consider coming to one meeting, November 4th might be a good one, because that's when we're going to start to get into some of the substance and detail. But of course, it's just your option. We'll talk about the preliminary salary and benefits, as I described, major categories of expense, and give you a preview of a consolidated budget. And then in terms of other key data releases that'll affect us, I mentioned the Healthcare Initiative. AOE is going to hopefully give us guidance in November about what tuitions we are allowed to charge for those students who come into our school, and that's important, because our tuition revenues are approximately $3 million a year. And then we'll get in December from the state of Vermont Department of Taxes, we'll get some really important indicators that have an impact on what the tax rate ultimately is, and we'll be able to share that with you in December. So that's the process and where we are. I think that personally, from what I've seen and with the great collaboration that we're having, I think the caliber of this budget is going to be even better than in previous years, which in terms of continuous improvement is what we should be doing for you. But so far, so good. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have. Well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Todd.
You're back.
Hi, Gwen. So thank you for having us. I'm Melissa Cowan, Director at Stafford, and I'm joined by Gwen Hagenbarth, who is our Assistant Director of Adult Education. So typically, when we're here, we're talking about our high school programs, but tonight's the night, I get the night off from talking, because I get to turn it over to Gwen, who's going to tell you about our evening division programs.
Hello, everyone. I'm Gwen Hagenbarth. I'm the Assistant Director of Adult Education at Stafford, its career and technical education. I included a report that all of you should have, and it's about which classes we had over the summer. Our school year never ends, our classes never end, we just keep going. Every time I think I have the schedule set, I'm setting a new schedule. So we had welding over the summer in, with Vermont local roads, and we actually served 25 students in that, in those training programs, and there was only six days in August, but that went really well. We had an LNA program over the summer with seven students. They tested, maybe they test on September 30th, we don't know those results yet, but we typically have 100% certification, sometimes one or so doesn't make it, and they can retest. And then we had, I was happy that we have a lot of classes that I tried to run last year. For those of you that don't know, I've only been doing this for just over a year. So last year, some programs that typically ran just didn't take off, and this year, I was very happy that the CCMA, which is a Certified Clinical Medical Assistant Program, is... is happening this year, so that makes me feel good. We tried twice last year, it didn't happen. It's low enrollment, but it is happening. Just looking in here. Our program that is, that keeps us going here is our CDL program, our Commercial Driver's License Program, that's run out of West Rutland and the Casella plant. Right now, that's always a rolling enrollment, so as soon as someone has registered and met all the requirements, they start. We typically have anywhere from 16 to 20 students enrolled at any one given time. Right now, we have 23. And one of our challenges is that we need to find another assistant or like a part-time instructor. We have a full-time instructor who's amazing, works six days a week, because even though the program only happens on Saturdays as far as the classroom time, from eight to four on Saturdays, he accommodates all their different schedules to do the driving on the road, all different, all days of the week except Sunday. He does keep Sunday where he does take, and we don't, takes off on Sunday. So we would like to have, we're looking for an assistant or a part-time instructor. We did have one, but you know, life changes for different people, and now we have to look for another one. And then you heard me say this last year, and anybody that meets with me at any time, some of you are in other meetings with me, we need to find trucks. Our trucks are 1994, 1995, and a 1998. We need new trucks. I've been working on that, and I don't know, every time I think I've got something that's going to work, things change. I've applied for some grants. I think I have a grant that might give us a little bit of money towards something. I have a lot of, lot of suggestions from meetings I've had with the Department of Labor and other folks who to call and ask for reduced prices of used trucks, you know, if they're willing, or donations, you know, we'll accept any donations. But that's what we're really working on. We really do need to do that. It is our largest program, and we need to keep that going. And it is a big need out there in the public. I mean, I get, we have beefed up advertising this year, again, because now I know exactly what I should be advertising, and, but the CDL program, we get calls all the time. It's just a great need, and we get calls in both needs. We get calls for people that want the course, and we get calls from businesses that are like, we need CDL drivers. You know, who do you have as recent graduates?
Trucks like Peterbilt, or like what kind of truck?
An 18-wheeler tractor truck, yeah. And we need, and the thing is, we really need an automatic transmission. All of ours are standard, which is great, and, but we have some folks that don't want to use a standard at all, which is problematic once you get your certification because then you're limited, but there are folks that want the automatic option out there. The other program that, our cosmetology program, so cosmetology is a long program. It's a thousand-hour program, so it's broken up into cosmetology I and cosmetology II. This program started before I was hired, and then it switched to cosmetology II last February, so they're still working with those students. They should finish, I think we're going to finish in the spring. We're thinking maybe April it'll be done, and then we'll start up another program. We're thinking we're going to wait till August for funding for that program. Aesthetics, we had some hiccups with aesthetics last year, and it took a while to get a new aesthetics program going and a new instructor, Lynn Ellie, I'm really happy to have her. It's still happening at the Woods in Killington. We have a small cohort of students, but it is happening, and we're very happy about that. It is something that I want to look into as far as other locations, not that the Killington location is fabulous, beautiful, and costly. So I want to look into other locations for that in the future, and I've been given some ideas from some knowledgeable folks. The other thing that we have is online courses, and since July, it's hard to keep track of how many people are in them, but since July, we've had about 15 different folks use those. And when I, this advertising that we have, I leave some of these or some back there. Anybody's welcome to the advertising that we have put out. This is something that I share with the high schools, too. I've gone to all the high schools, pretty much, I have one more that I want to get to, and I give them to the guidance offices. Many of their students, high school students, can't take our courses until they graduate, but the online stuff, they certainly can, and there's a lot of online options, like 300. So there's stuff for them to look into. And we have a great partnership with GE, and their courses are happening at our school. Then we have, we had one in the summer, too. We had a GE program for at least six or eight weeks in the summer, and then we have our program this semester, there's four classes, and next semester, there'll be more. Welding has been amazing, the response to welding. We have a series of four courses. The first one is almost over, it's the intro course. We have 13 students, we really shouldn't, the limit's supposed to be around 10. I always, you always have people drop out, nobody dropped out. So we kept it at 13, and we have 13 people signed up for the next one, we have people signed up for the third and the fourth, so welding's going strong. We're actually thinking if we get more people to sign up, we could even open a second class this next one, so we'll see how it goes. LNA and phlebotomy, having some trouble getting folks interested in that for the upcoming programs, haven't had trouble in the past, but these things go through cycles. I think you deplete your pool of students every once in a while, and LNA, we, I've reached out to some of the assisted living facilities in the area and the hospital. We're working on it, we'll see if we can get that to go. And phlebotomy, they should be off and running soon. And then happy to say that Wheel Throne Pottery is going to start tomorrow, and that was one of the things that has been offered in the past and didn't fly last year, but it is going to happen starting tomorrow, so it's kind of nice to offer a fun program for folks around here. Most of our programs are certification programs, but not all have to be. Any questions?
So the electrical program, is that like strictly a day thing? Is this a night thing we're talking about right now?
Yeah.
Okay, so electrical is more of a day thing?
More of a day thing. There are some, believe it or not, electrical, residential electrical programs online that you can take, too. You know, like if you just like a homeowner's fix-it kind of thing, our Ed2Go programs have that.
That's a lot, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
This is great.
Thank you very much.
It's really impressive. All right. Pam and Carrie.
You bet. So we're going to continue our update on our continuous improvement plans and our strategic plan. You'll recall, last time we talked about teaching and learning, the first domain in our strategic plan. This update is focused on wellness, which is the second in the strategic plan, and I led that work last year in my role as the Director. Carrie has assumed that position, and therefore she's going to take the lead tonight.
Hi.
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 Thanks for letting me take the lead on this.
You bet.
Appreciate it. Just a reminder, we have three priority areas. Bianca talked last month about teaching and learning. This one is the evolution of wellness through inclusive school communities. We have broken that down into three different areas, students, staff, and infrastructure. We have two main goals that we are working on. The first one is for staff, wellness for staff. You can see the goal is really wordy, but what it's saying is by June of 2032, and I said to Pam, 2032 sounds so far away. Rotten City Public Schools will foster a positive, connected, and collaborative culture where staff feel successful and supported through shared problem-solving, regular recognition, and wellness initiatives that promote balance and belonging. So that's our overarching goal for staff. We have, you know, 2032, we have, we've broken it down into different years. So for this year, our, kind of our goals are to look at introducing staff to a district-wide problem-solving framework that really encourages collaboration. And what we're saying is we want, we want everyone to be able to have a voice, and how are we going to do that? That's going to be the work of the Wellness Committee, to kind of figure out how, how can we encourage more collaboration between our staff and the decision-makers? We're going to launch one initiative to foster a positive collaborative culture that looks at some diverse perspectives, and again, that is going to be tasked with the Wellness Committee and we have, you know, our Wellness Team. We've already started staff recognition systems. We did that at the beginning of the year during our in-service, and then recognition tonight with the UVM Teacher of the Year recipients and others throughout the year. So making that a priority for all, but really committing to at least two kind of bigger ones. And then also offering two wellness opportunities, really kind of looking at that work-life balance and serving our staff so that we can see an increase in their, you know, feeling that they are being supported, and that's this year.
We collected baseline data on that last year.
And so then action steps, what we're doing, again, looking at the problem-solving framework, coming up with something, designing the, we have the implementation of a district-wide Wellness Team. That's new this year, they're going to be working together, tasked with a lot of this, focusing on the staff recognition, personal and electronic. So I know Pam has been really diligent about making those personal notes and connections. I aspire to be more like her, I'm trying. Wellness opportunities, again, thinking about what we can put in place for staff. For example, last year, we did the staff discount card. So, you know, what can we do this year? What's something to help promote wellness for our staff? And then align our resources, again, with, you know, what they're asking with the survey, you know, how we can support that. And then the second goal is for our students, and again, by 2032, we will strengthen a culture of well-being that supports the physical, social, and emotional health of all students by improving attendance, increasing participation in school activities, and adding new inclusive wellness initiatives each year. And so same thing for this year, really are looking at establishing some baseline data for attendance. You know, each school takes attendance, I wish I could say it was consistent across the district, but we are working on making sure that how attendance is taken is accurate, and then really looking at what our numbers are so that we have a good baseline. We are already, and we were talking about this, implementing two new inclusive wellness-focused initiatives in each school. That might sound like a lofty goal, but as we're already talking, like, yeah, that's really doable because just, you know, two of our elementary schools, we've added the Movement Lab, that's a wellness. So it's not going to be as challenging as initially thought. Promote awareness campaigns highlighting the importance of attendance and participation. So again, we really want to see the kids in school, in the building, so what do we need to do to help support that? And we have some target increases there. And then what are we doing as far as wellness? And again, it's all around bringing consistency. So we are looking at, and we started this last year, looking at what are the barriers for students participating in activities and events? And then what do we do to support that? Is it, is it the time of things? Is it transportation? Is, you know, looking to see what they're identifying as barriers. We have looked at bringing that consistency to our functional behavioral assessments, the behavior plans that we use, and the process we use for behavioral threat assessment. So again, just really trying to be consistent to support everyone that we can. Align our SEL curriculum and our approach to challenging behaviors. You know, we talked about, Pam was talking earlier, about the continuum of services, and really making sure the language we're using, the approaches we're taking are consistent, and not, you know, what's in one school is different than the other. So that, that's a work in progress. Data collection for behavioral incidences is another work in progress. We're finding that there are, you know, different ways to identify behavior. So you could have, if someone comes to mind, you could maybe have a fight, somebody defines it as a fight, and somebody else defines it as physical aggression. So it's just when you go to disaggregate that data, it's trickier. So again, trying to be more consistent with how we're naming things. And then at all levels, we're looking to include the portrait of a graduate traits into the SEL instruction. You hear every month how that's done, usually at the elementary levels, but we are looking at incorporating that into the middle school and high school as well. We've already started looking at that as the Wellness Committee last year. This year, we brought it to the building admin and getting that all set in place so that next year, right in September, and all the way through. If you're working on collaboration, it doesn't matter what school you're in, you know, if, let's say it's March. In March, you could have high school kids coming down, talking about collaboration in the younger grades because everybody's doing it the same, same time. So we're looking at, again, bringing that consistency. Always important, making sure that staff is trained on de-escalation. You know, we're, we just had some training for our paraeducators, we did some de-escalation, we did some trauma-informed responses, we did some beyond behavior. So really just giving as much information to those that need it, and then implementing a consistent system to monitor that attendance, and I just mentioned that. That is my, that's it on wellness. Are there any questions?
I was just wondering, the Wellness Team, is there still a coordinated school health team?
We do not have a coordinated school health team.
You're looking at me?
Not called coordinated.
It's not called that. Well, no, so I worked at the schools, that's why it was called, and as a hygienist, I was on there, and I just, Catherine Jacobowski from the Department of Health worked with it. I just was wondering if like...
She still visits with the school nurses, and I think we probably still have the meetings, but it's not called coordinated.
Okay. Well, no, and then it wasn't just nurses, it was like, I mean, it was, I mean, at the time, it was Marty from the food service, and there was like a...
They don't, we don't have that.
Don't have that anymore, okay. I was just wondering if like this was part of...
Could you give us a little background or a picture of what attendance is like and what, like how meaningful is a 1% increase in attendance? Like, I know it's probably different in every school, and I get the, I'm sort of hearing that it's not uniform in every school, but sort of a ballpark, like is 1% like really working hard? Or what does it mean in tangible values?
I think the 1% is really just part of that baseline, and let's just see this year if we can get that baseline and get a little bit better.
What is it like? Like, what is attendance like now?
In each of the buildings, I'm not sure I can tell you how it's done generally, like in the primary and elementary, you're taking attendance once.
Oh, I just mean like, is, do we have 25% of students absent?
I don't have that, no. Like, in the primary and elementary, you're taking attendance once.
Oh, I just mean like, is, do we have 25% of students absent? Do we have 10% of students absent?
So that, that's, that's part of this year's action, is to get that baseline. Like, what, what is it at each of the buildings?
I understand what you're saying because I feel like, is 1%? Is that a drop in the bucket? Or should it be more like 3% or 5%? I'm not sure what that 1% is.
I mean, the numbers probably exist somewhere, even if they're not hard, totally accurate. So we could get an understanding of what 1% means and if that, yeah.
Yeah, we can get that at each of the buildings. I just don't know it.
Just ballpark, yeah. And want that. That'd be great.
The 1% increase is from the fall to the spring, correct? That's what you're looking to target within the school year?
This one year.
Okay.
I think I had a question. So, so the baseline data, so you're gathering that now, right? You're getting the attendance data now? And then the participation in school-sponsored events? And then will there be a student-like wellness survey that you all are working on?
Yep.
And that's, okay. And so that's, yeah. So it'll be a number of different sets of data?
Yep, most, most of it is either, like you said, pulling the data that we have access to or surveying, whether it's staff or, and students.
Okay. All right, good.
Does food insecurity fall in a different place than this? Or I'm just wondering, like, some students, food insecurity?
Food insecurity.
As far as maybe they don't have breakfast or dinner, I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, I think that would be under their wellness, for sure. Like, their physical, yeah. So, you know, one of the things, like, the intermediate school has their food pantry, right? So we could look at, you know, how often is that being used? And how do we get that word out to other buildings to access it more? I can say that they weren't prior to. So that's something we could do to help with that issue. Any other questions?
No, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. It'll be very interesting to see how it comes together, you know, the data.
So we have our committee reports. Building Stephanie is not here. Glenn, do you want to give us a short setup?
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Hi, Glenn.
Hi.
Hey. So we had four topics in our Building Committee last, on October 7th. We talked about the Northeast Playground and how we had prioritized that for replacement this year. All of our playgrounds were kind of installed around the same time. But what we're working on at Northeast is to create some accessibility and also build in some preparation for K, pre-K. And it just, in general, it needed to be replaced. So we're looking at the cost of that. We're supplementing, or actually, the seed funding is coming from $115,000 from a grant. We used a little bit of that money at Northwest, a little bit at Northeast. So we're also going to move some additional local money around to make up the difference. So that was what we talked about. As Ted mentioned, at RIMS, we're looking at a much-needed replacement and upgrade of the kitchen, the lower kitchen and the upper kitchen cafeteria area to create some more modern space, some more efficient space, and a much more updated space in general. It's loud in there, so we're going to address that. But also the preparation, as we saw during our tour back in June, the two elevators would be addressed as well to create some efficiency and safety there. At Stanford, around back, serving Chris Thule and the Creative Structure Building and Forestry and Agriculture Building, there's a Forest Main, which is basically just a big sewer pump. That was installed in 1974, so we're looking at the infrastructure there. We're going to plan on some study to get a cost of what that would cost. We're probably not going to be able to do that for, you know, three to four years, but it definitely needs to be put on the forecast for the future. And then we talked about energy and heating costs this year. So we got some quotes back from our pellet supplier and our oil supplier. And basically, pellets went up about 12%, I'm sorry, 6%. But it ends up, our economy of usage basically makes it more efficient or more cost economical to use oil over our pellets, but it's kind of right on the line. So we'll be primarily using oil, but having, supplementing with pellets as we need to as well. So that was what we talked about in Building Committee. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Finance and strategic planning, Mary Beth?
Yes, thanks for the summary, Ted. Appreciate it here. We had three topics. We also met on October 7th after the Building Committee. And we had three topics that we covered, the strategic plan, the budget, the fiscal '27 budget, and stipends for school board members. As we just heard from Pam and me and Carrie, obviously, about the evolution of wellness through inclusive school communities. Bianca just gave us an update, saying that they were going to update us tonight. So thanks for doing that, we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Fiscal year '27 budget, obviously Ted went over that, went over what we were talking about with that tonight. And at the upcoming November meeting, as you mentioned, we'll review the more consolidated budget, including salaries and benefits and other major categories of expense, get a little more into what's going to actually build that budget. And maybe we'll have some more information on grant revenues and other unknowns at this point. So Ted expects that. We'll also have the initial guidance, as he said, tonight, on the cost increases for employee medical plan insurance for next year. Fingers crossed on that one for sure, a big driver. And then the last topic we covered was board stipends. Ted presented results of benchmarking, of a benchmarking analysis that surveyed annual stipends paid by 14 other school systems right here in the Rattlin area to their boards. The survey results and a business office recommendation are summarized in a memo that was included in our board consent agenda tonight. The recommended stipends will be implemented starting in April of 2026. And the next committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, the 11th at 6 o'clock. Thank you.
Thanks, Ted.
Thanks, Mary Beth.
Yeah.
We have our Policy Committee report next. Ryan is not here. Bianca, do you want to do a recap and then we can vote?
Yes, I certainly will. And right before I do that, I just want to add about food insecurities, just so our community and the board is aware. All of our students have access to free breakfast and lunch in our schools every day. Our elementary schools participate in a fruit and vegetable program that allows for several days out of the week for students to try various fresh fruits and vegetables. And students who participate in Tapestry and Epic have additional food available. Epic, they actually have a dinner that they can take if they would like to. So. Policy Committee met on September 16th and we discussed policies, as we often do. You will see that the Policy Committee is recommending three policies for first reading, sexual and other harassment, student records, and prevention of harassment, hazing, and bullying of students. All of these were updated based on revisions through the Vermont School Boards Association. And legal updates, I'll just mention that, for example, in the hazing, harassment, and bullying prevention policy, there are two new protected categories for harassment, citizenship and immigration status. So I think you all have to motion.
Yes, could I have a motion to move these three policies to second reading?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Any questions on the policy?
Thank you. So we have a V S B A and Legislative Action Committee that has not yet met. We're going to have the first meeting on October 21st at 6:00 p.m. After the policy meeting, I would encourage everyone to come. With so much going on on the state level, that is going to be a place where we can really drill down to the specifics of the conversations going on and how it will impact, or how it could potentially impact our district if things should continue to move forward. And it is also the night before the task force is meeting at the high school. So it would also give us a chance to talk and-
Where is this meeting, Kath?
It's at the high school.
The 21st one is also?
No, that meeting is here. It's after policy. It's here. The next night is the big task force meeting at the high school where the folks from our Agency of Education are coming down. And I think there'll be senators and the whole, the task force-
Yep.
That's making the recommendations about the map and, yes, that's, are they going to be talking about local control?
My understanding is that they'll give kind of an overview of their work thus far and then accept public comment.
Okay, okay. And for our 1021 meeting, our meeting, our Legislative Action, is Maggie coming down for that meeting?
That's what we had.
So Maggie Lentz, who is working in Montpelier, monitoring what's going on, like, in the room, monitoring, talking to senators and the task force after meetings, will be here to speak to us at that committee.
Yeah, she's been instrumental in making sure that we were staying abreast of all of the different changes and actions that are happening. And so she's going to come and talk with this group, with this group on the 21st.
6:00 p.m., after policy. Okay, do we have any unfinished business? Anyone? Okay.
Can I just say one thing? I think that we moved policy to 5:30 and so the V S, Legislative Action Committee is at 6:30.
6:30, thank you.
Yeah.
6:30, thank you.
Okay, sure. Yep.
Okay. And the task force meeting the following night is 6 to 8 at the high school. All right, we have quite a bit of new business, actually. Mary Beth is going to give us a recap from our board retreat.
Yeah, kind of like an overarching summary here.
An overarching summary.
Is that okay that I called it that? Okay, so during our school board, sorry, during our Board of School Commissioners Retreat, okay, good, that's up there, all right. In September, we met for two nights, the 23rd and the 25th, for a couple hours each night. We had, among numerous other important topics, our facilitator, Deborah Singizer, from the Vermont School Boards Association, worked with us to ensure we have a clear and solid understanding of both the authority and the accountability of the board. And you'll notice from the graphic that she showed us, we have authority coming down through this hourglass-shaped graphic and then accountability going back up. So we spent some time talking about that. The graphic here was incredibly helpful for us. The executive summary, or the short story of the couple of nights specifically regarding this, is that individually, we do not have any authority. We can only act as a board. And I think that's really important for all of us to be reminded of. And it was a really good reminder during the retreat to have that. And certainly good for the community to understand that as well, that individually, we have zero power. We are a board that acts together. Sorry, I didn't make this big enough, my notes. We have a responsibility to ensure the schools are run well, but we do not run the schools. That's Pam's job, all right? That's the superintendent's job, so, and she is our single employee. We intend, from this point forward, to really work hard to stay in our own lane in a really diligent manner, especially when it comes to the day-to-day operational items. The board's roles include engaging the community and establishing a vision, adopting policy, developing a solid board and superintendent partnership, and supervision of the superintendent, obviously, monitoring progress on both board and superintendent goals, developing a budget and assuring financial oversight, of course, with Ted and his team, and ensuring effective and ethical operations. And so we welcome, as always, community input and communication. We also ask our community to please understand the board roles as we've outlined them here tonight, and also understand the limitations each of us has as individual persons. You know, we enjoy engaging with the community and understanding what the concerns are. As a whole, we, we need to work as, as a whole. No individual board member has any, any, any power by themselves. So anyway, it was, I thought it was an excellent retreat and I think we have a couple other things we wanted to mention from there, so.
So one of the things that we decided to do is make three goals for us as a board. Jen and Stephanie volunteered to take on the crafting of those goals, and they're not here. So I'll just kind of generally say what our goals are and know that they're going to come back with the actual fine wording. Our first goal is going to connect to monitoring the superintendent goals and how we're doing as a board. So some sort of process or procedure for monitoring how we're doing. Goal two is going to really be about the superintendent's goals and evaluation. So there's a goal around that. And the third goal will be to create an annual work plan in relation to those goals. So we have Jen and Stephanie working on the wording of the three goals. We have Charlene and Mary Beth working with Pam on establishing the superintendent goals and an evaluation process. And then we have Karen, Ryan, and Lauren, who have agreed to draft the work plan. So those are all hopefully going to come together at the November meeting so that we can vote on them and approve them. And it can be official moving forward to June, when the whole process will start again. Any questions? Any questions about that? Okay. We also are mandated by statute to submit district quality standards to the state of Vermont. They're due on November 21st, right? So I was hoping to get two volunteers to work with Pam. It should not be extensive.
Probably take an hour, maybe an hour and a half. It's a one-time commitment, so it's short-lived. It's, look, I like that short-lived, now people are like, yeah!
Before I even heard that, I would love to hang out with you.
Same thing, fantastic, thank you. I'll organize it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
When does that do? When did you say that?
The 21st of November. So we've got Lauren, Christine, and Courtney. Okay, and I have two copies of the district quality standards now. We can make another one.
It's divided into three areas. There's business, facilities, and governance. And so you're just going to be doing the governance section. And then Ted and I, and Glenn and I will do the other section.
That's everything I have for new, oh, we've got the V S B A Business Meeting. I need a volunteer for someone to attend a Zoom meeting and vote on behalf of the, our board.
Isn't that the same night as the legis-
Oh, it is the 20, is it the 21st? Do you remember what night it is for that? I did. Uh, bear with me.
Glad I had the night. I don't think it's, I think it's the 23rd. I don't think it's-
It's not the 22nd?
No, it's not the, I'm pretty sure. I don't have it all, can rifle through all these papers and still not found it. It's the 23rd, I believe. And it's an evening, it's a 6:00 p.m.
Is it the 23rd?
Still looking.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay. You email it to us, that way we know if we're available.
It is the 23rd. I have it, 10:23, V S B A Annual Business Meeting on Zoom at 6:00 p.m.
There you go. So it's the night after the-
The task force.
So the 21st, you could come and meet with Maggie, the 22nd, you go to the task force, the 23rd. I mean, that sounds like a full week of social engagement.
Fun of-
Wow.
More time together.
Okay. Well, I'll ask Ryan, Jen, or Stephanie if they're willing to attend that meeting.
It says on Zoom at 6?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the 23rd. Okay. Now that's really everything. So, do we have an executive session?
We do not have an executive session.
Do not have an executive session. So could I please have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.